It's time to call the business meeting of Florence City Council to order. If you please stand.
We pray for the wisdom to make decisions that are beneficial to the people represented here. And how we can speak honestly, reflect wisely, and vote with integrity. We seek your guidance tonight. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call vote, please. I mean, roll call, please.
Mr. Carroll.
Present.
Ms. Chambers.
Here.
Mr. Nguyen.
Here.
Ms. Kemper.
Here.
Ms. Wingo.
Here.
Mr. Osborne.
Here.
We have a quorum.
First item is approval of the minutes for the business meeting, May 14th, 2024. Is there a motion to approve?
Sum of.
Ms. Wingo. Second, Mr. Nguyen. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next is second reading of ordinance O-10, 2024. It is an ordinance adopting and approving a change of concept development plan in a commercial-to-plan development Houston Donaldson Study Corridor C2 PD HGO District for an approximate 10.3 acre site located at 4999 Houston Road, Florence, Kentucky, to allow a portion of the existing building to be used for office, retail, recreation, or warehousing and distribution uses. This is a Turfway Commons. The effect of this ordinance is to allow a portion of the existing building to be used for office, retail, recreation, or warehousing and distribution uses on an approximate 10.3 acre site in a commercial-to-plan development Houston Donaldson Study Corridor C2 PD HGO District. Full text of ordinance O-10, 2024, including its exhibits, is available for examination in the office of the city clerk, 8100 Union Boulevard, Florence, Kentucky, during normal office hours. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Mr. Carroll.
Second.
Ms. Wingo. Any discussions? This is the second reading.
This is the old Walmart building, for those who might be concerned about it.
This is the second reading. It did go through planning commission. It went before the Planning and Zoning Committee. Did recommend approval. We did have a first reading, so this is the second reading. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Carroll.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Mr. Nguyen.
Yes.
Ms. Kemper.
Yes.
Ms. Wingo.
Yes.
Mr. Osborne.
Yes.
Mayor, motion passes six zero.
Next item is an ordinance of the city amending the budget for the 2023-2024 fiscal year of the city. The purpose of this amendments are A, to reflect an increase in general fund capital outlay for the PWE athletic field upgrades, and B, to reflect increases in golf course fund revenues and expenses based on the year-to-date actual results. Is there a motion to approve?
Sum of.
Ms. Wingo. Mr. Carroll. Any discussion? Lynda, do you have anything?
No, I think we've vetted this last week, and there weren't any questions then, unless somebody's got something that came up since last week.
Roll call vote.
Mr. Carroll.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Mr. Nguyen.
Yes.
Ms. Kemper.
Yes.
Ms. Wingo.
Yes.
Mr. Osborne.
Yes.
Mayor, motion passes six zero.
Next item is the annual budget address and state of the city. As we gather here this evening for the annual state of the city and budget address, I come before you not just as the mayor of Florence, but as a fellow citizen who shares your dreams and aspirations for our beloved city. In my second year of service as your mayor, I am proud to say that our city is not just surviving, but thriving. We are moving forward, driven by the shared vision of the council, including its members Mel Carroll, Leslie Chambers, Jenna Kemper, David Osborne, Patricia Wingo, and Gary Nguyen, who work together to make Florence a safe, community-driven city that is fiscally responsible. Our mission to provide is to provide the highest quality of life for the people in our community in innovative ways. It is not just a statement on paper. It is a commitment that drives every decision we make. It is a promise that we pursue each day by being the best in all we do. We are building upon a city that is not just a place to live, but a place to flourish, a city that is not just safe, but inviting, a city that is not just economically responsible, but also innovative and forward-thinking. Therefore, I am delighted to share with you our state of the city and budget address for the fiscal year 2024-2025. The budget for the upcoming year represents comprehensive spending for all city funds. Takes into account all anticipated and projected cost increases, as well as forecasts for our diverse revenue streams. The budget is a testament to our commitment to remain economically prudent and strategically planned for the future of Florence. The general fund budget proposal for 2024-25 projects revenues of $50.4 million. The projected expenditures are estimated at $48.1 million, which includes operating and capital expenditures, and including transfers to other city funds. The city of Florence's operating costs are $38.0 million, which is an overall 5% increase over those budgeted for the fiscal year 23-24. This is mainly due to a rise in operating expenses over the prior year and an annual state pension increase of 12% per year. The city of Florence has planned expenditures for capital items of $10.1 million, which is a 68.73 decrease from last year. This administration and finance department's overall budget is $4.5, or $4,533,500. I would first like to recognize the outstanding work of our finance department. Under the capable leadership of Chief Financial Officer, Human Resources Director Linda Chapman, this team has been the backbone of our city's financial stability. Their diligent efforts have ensured that we remain economically prudent, laying a sustainable financial foundation for our city. Our finance department is comprised of six staff members, is responsible for the collection of all revenues for the city, dispersing all payments, administering the employee benefits program, and coordinating the city's information technology vendor relationship. Within the past year, the finance department has successfully implemented an upgrade to Springbrook Software, ensuring our finance resource management remains state of the art. This dedicated team has interacted with over 11,000 citizens, providing outstanding customer service. Their skillful handling of inquiries and concerns demonstrates their exceptional communication and problem-solving abilities. For the past 20 years, our chief financial officer and finance department have been recognized by the Government Finance Officers Association for excellence in financial reporting through the comprehensive annual financial report. This is the highest recognition award for municipalities' financial reporting. Furthermore, the city received its ninth consecutive distinguished budget presentation award, showcasing a consistent commitment to precision and financial transparency. Lastly, our yearly audit, conducted by Chamberlain Owen, Certified Public Accountants, was conducted without any discrepancies, a further testament to the department's commitment to transparency and accountability. As we look to the future, I must also acknowledge an upcoming change. Our esteemed Chief Financial Officer, Human Resources Administrator, Linda Chapman, will be retiring in August. Linda's years of service have been marked with dedication and exceptional service. While we will greatly miss her, we do wish her the best in her future endeavors. On behalf of City Council, myself, Lynda, we extend our thanks to you and the entire finance department for your commitment to our city. Your hard work does not go unnoticed, and we are grateful for your service. Your fiscal responsibility ensures that our city will continue to lead the region in economic growth and advancement. The next department I would like to recognize is the Administration Department, led by Director of Administration, the City Administrator Joshua Hunt. Josh and his team of nine dedicated employees have worked tirelessly to execute the city's responsibilities and ensure the advancement of our city. The Administration Department has undergone personnel changes over the past year, a testament of our ongoing commitment to progress and advancement. The creation of the Human Services Administrator, along with the restructuring and modernization of several positions, including the Director of Business Development and the Director of Community Development, signifies a significant leap in our dedication to propel the city forward. These changes not only reflect the adaptability of the department, but also they're resolved to meet the evolving needs of the city. The Administration Department is home to the city clerk and public relations administrator and her dedicated team. They are the custodians of city records, ensuring transparency by managing legislative agendas and promoting the city through press releases and social media postings. Their efforts are crucial in maintaining open communication between the city government and its residents. This past year, they took a significant step forward by creating the community guide, which was delivered to every resident, and the department's launch of our city's YouTube channel featuring livestream council meetings. These initiatives have greatly enhanced our city's transparency and accessibility. Their dedication ensures the smooth operation of our city government by providing administrative support to our Director of Administration, council members, and myself. Our recently appointed risk manager plays a crucial role in overseeing all insurance claims and workers' compensation matters. He also serves as the primary liaison with the Kentucky League of Cities for related activities, ensuring our city's interests are well represented. The Administration Department is also home to the Human Services Administrator. The Human Services Administrator reflects our unwavering commitment to addressing the needs of our community. Her role is pivotal in ensuring that the voices of our residents are heard and their needs are met. Lastly, our events team, under the expert leadership of the Community Services Coordinator and the Community Services Administrator, have shown extraordinary dedication in planning and executing city events, as well as ensuring our rental facilities are available for residents and visitors seamlessly. Their tireless efforts have resulted in a variety of events and community gatherings offer our residents a wealth of opportunities for engagement and personal growth, creating a strong sense of community within our city. Their work truly brings our city to life. Over the past year, they have introduced a host of new events, including the Summer Concert Series, Car Show, St. Patrick's Scavenger Hunt, and the Book and Literacy Festival. While also successfully continuing our beloved Halloween Night Out, our Christmas holiday tree lighting, and other events, their commitment and dedication have been evident in the flawless execution of each event. Their work is a testament to their passion for our community and their commitment to excellence. The Administration Department also serves as the epicenter for our economic growth, spearheading initiatives to propel Florence forward. During the past year, the department attracted $400 million in new capital investments. We oversaw the completion of $47 million in new capital investments and managed an additional $263 million in, under construction. We have $860 million in capital investments in the pipeline, all aimed at sustaining economic growth and prosperity of the city of Florence. The city has experienced a surge in new hotel developments, with eight hotels constructed during the past five years alone. These additions have introduced hundreds of new rooms to our cityscape and spurred millions in new capital investment. Looking ahead, the landscape will continue to evolve with the commencement of the Residence Inn on Meyer Drive and the completion of the Drury Inn at the intersection of Industrial Road and US 42. In addition to these projects, notable developments on the horizon include the arrival of Roy Rogers on the corner of US 42 and Industrial, Wingstop, and Florence Modern Dentistry on Mall Road, Our House Loft, and the Good Feet Store in Houston the Road area. Despite challenges such as rising interest rates and construction material shortages, our economic development team receives daily inquiries about new potential ventures. This demonstrates the resilience and attractiveness of our region, affirming that Northern Kentucky is not only an exceptional place to reside and conduct business, but also a prime destination for visitors. With approximately 2,000 businesses operating within our city limits, Florence stands as the nucleus of retail and commerce in Northern Kentucky. With the administration team, several core duties, and key personnel merit recognition for their pivotal roles in ensuring effective governance and community engagement. The Administration Department continues to strive for excellence in serving our community. Pursuit of excellence in service to our community is commendable. They are driving force behind our ongoing efforts to stimulate economic growth, uphold transparency and accountability, and improve the quality of life for all of our residents. On behalf of City Council, myself, I thank Mr. Hunt and the members of the Administration Department for their commitment to the dedication of the city. The next department I would like to address is our Florence Police Department, led by Chief Mallory, Jeff Mallory. The total budget is $12,722,600. The Florence Police Department takes immense pride in safeguarding our residents, business, and visitors to Florence. His dedicated team of officers and staff work tirelessly, merging effective patrolling and investigation techniques with building relationships within the community and businesses. Their collective efforts aim to maintain the safety and welcoming environment of Florence. The Florence Police Department, a dedicated team of 73 sworn officers, is structured into specialized units such as patrol, detective, drug investigations, and community resources. Over the past year, the department welcomed new members, including Kobe Algar, Joseph Smallwood, Ryan Fox, Brandon Brockman, Logan Delauter, Justin Tucker, Keith Wagner, and Hannah Boyd Hughes. Additionally, as the department celebrated these new additions, the department bid farewell to six of their esteemed colleagues who retired during the fiscal year. Among them was the Chief of Police, Tom Grou, along with Corporal Adam DeSalvo, Officer Sean McKibben, Officer Kevin Duncan, Officer Kai Ransdale, and Officer Kyle Sorensen. The entire city is grateful to these officers for their unwavering dedication and years of service to the city of Florence and our community. In April, the Florence Police Department ushered in a new era with the appointment of our new Chief of Police, Jeff Mallory. His leadership, coupled with the recent promotion of Lieutenant Jason Reed, promises exciting times ahead for the department. We look forward to continuing the commitment to serve and protect our community. During the last year, the Florence Police Department responded to 55,133 service calls, an increase since the previous year. Those calls led to a substantial 77,051 car responses, reflecting their commitment to the safety of our community. Overall, the department's traffic-related incidents, including accidents, motor assists, and traffic enforcement made up 23% of the department's activities, marking a slight decrease of 4% from the previous year. General requests encompassing alarm drops and information requests constituted 47% of the activities. Criminal calls represented 19%, while administrative calls made up the remaining 11%. Our fiscal year, over the fiscal year, the department conducted a total of 5,458 traffic stops, and the primary focus of traffic enforcement was speeding, with 338 stops and seatbelt violations with 243 stops. Traffic accidents calls saw a marginal decrease of 1%, totaling 3,003. In the general response category, several areas witnessed an increase. Trespassing calls rose by 73% from 95 the previous year to 164 this year. Harassment calls saw a 50% increase from 170 to 255, and juvenile-related calls increased by 42% from 169 to 240. Shoplifting calls also saw a rise of 32% from 684 to 906. Conversely, some areas saw a decrease in the general response category. Calls regarding loiterers fell by 19%. Overdose calls decreased by 16% from 185 to 155, and calls related to fights fell by 12% from 314 to 275. And lastly, alarm drops saw a 6% decrease from 2030 to 1910. Over the past year, the Florence Police Department maintained their commitment to excellence, achieving and sustaining state accreditation since 1986, showcasing continuous dedication to high standards, professionalism, and practices in law enforcement. The community resource officers continue to demonstrate a commitment to the community outreach programs, successfully leading impact programs, administering DARE, Drug Abuse Resistance Education, to over 800 youth in our community. Through enhanced training and safety programs, the department received the Kentucky League of Cities Safety Grant, Safety Awareness Award, and recognized their exceptional commitment to creating a secure and safe environment for the community. The city of Florence holds a commitment to recruiting and training the finest officers. We deeply appreciate the community's support for our officers and take immense pride in the positive influence they exert on our community. Their dedication and service is integral to the safety in our community. On behalf of City Council, myself, I express my appreciation to all the members of the Florence Police Department. Your commitment to safety and well-being of our city is truly commendable. Each day, you put on your uniforms and badges, not knowing what the challenges might be. You face them head-on with determination and a sense of duty. You are the guardians of our community, and for that, I and the entire city are eternally grateful. Thank you for your service, and thank you for your sacrifice to keep Florence safe. Next, our Florence Fire EMS Department, led by Fire EMS Chief Rodney Ren, is comprised of 72 career personnel, with two full-time civilian administrative support and one part-time inspector. The total department budget is $13,226,709. Over the past year, the Florence Fire EMS Department welcomed new members to their team, including firefighter, paramedics Josh Abden and Nathan Velden, firefighter EMTs Colin Kim, Brady Murray, Ethan Morris, Josh Hobbs, and Sam Reynolds, and paramedics Ali Ratliff and Andrew Robbins, and Battalion Chief Danielle Steiner. Their addition has brought fresh perspectives and reinforced the department's commitment to service. Additionally, the department bid farewell to some of its seasoned members, including Captain EMTs Dave Pining and Wes Burns, and firefighter/paramedic Dave Wecorn, who retired. The entire city is grateful for their contributions and wish them well in their retirement. In the midst of these changes, the department celebrated the promotions of several team members, including Assistant Chief Ryan Bourne, Battalion Chief Joey Markham, Captain Sean Ross, Matt Hawkins, and Joe McNamara, and Lieutenants Dan Cox, Wally LaMaster, and Jimmy Rose. Their promotions not only signify personal achievement, but also mark a new chapter in the department's journey towards excellence. Over the past year, the department responded to over 10,700 incidents, which included more than 8,900 medical emergencies and 1,700 fire and incident responses. The department is also deeply committed to professional development, completing an impressive 7,803 hours of training. This included specialized courses such as TEACs Management 314, Enhanced All Hazards Incident Management Unified Command at Texas A&amp;M National Response and Recovery Training Center, attended by Chief Rodney Ren, Assistant Chief John Black, Chris Miller, and Ryan Bourne, Battalion Chief Randy Childress, and Captain Curtis. Additionally, personnel underwent Fire Officer One training, including Battalion Chief Matt Plyman, Lieutenant Dan Cox, and Lieutenant Jimmy Rose. The commitment to continuous learning and improvement was further demonstrated by Chief Rodney Ren, firefighter/paramedic Tim Mitchell, and firefighter/EMT Nate Anderson earning their Fire Investigation Technician certifications. Lieutenant Brent West completed the Command and Control of Incident Operations Course, while Battalion Chief Matt Plyman, Assistant Chief Ryan Bourne, and Captain John McNamara became certified in Basic Emergency Rescue Technicians. Captain Dave Curtis furthered his leadership skills by completing the National Fire Academy Managing Fire Officer Program. The Florence Fire EMS Department's presence was also felt at the Kentucky Association of Fire Chief Conference, attended by Chief Ren and Assistant Chief Black. Additionally, personnel participated as responders and drill evaluators, and the full-scale airport disaster drill, showcasing our readiness to handle large-scale emergencies. This past year, the Florence EMS Department has been a beacon of dedication and excellence. They celebrated the 25-year service anniversary of Assistant Chief Black and Captain Tim Webster, a testament to their commitment to the residents and community of Florence. Team members, including Lieutenant Rick Purrier, Medic Danielle Ireland, firefighter/paramedic Nathan Dees, Lieutenant EMT Jimmy Rose, firefighter/paramedic Zach Green, and firefighter/EMT Josh Tucker, were honored with a Target Stroke Brain Pin, recognizing their exceptional service in emergency medical care. Furthermore, firefighter/paramedic Joe Marlowe was awarded by Gateway as the Paramedic Program Preceptor of the Year, and he has also successfully completed the Paramedic to Registered Nurse Program, further enhancing the department's medical expertise. Most notably, the Florence Fire EMS Department was recognized with the prestigious Mission Lifeline EMS Silver Target Heart Attack Honor Roll. This honor is bestowed by the American Heart Association for implementing a higher standard of care, ensuring STEMI patients receive treatment according to evidence-based guidelines, recommendations, and standards. This recognition underscores our unwavering commitment to the health and safety of our community. The Florence Fire EMS Department is deeply rooted in our community, participating in over 80 events, including the Tunnel to Towers 5K, the Tunnel to Towers Traveling Museum, City Events Coat Drive, Hands and Voices Lunch with Firefighters, and Fire Prevention Month. These engagements are a testament to our commitment to the community involving public safety. Looking ahead, the department and the entire city is excited about the completion of Station 34, a significant milestone that will bring about the operational changes reshaping response areas and the deployment of apparatus and personnel for service calls. In August 2024, the city will bid farewell to Assistant Chief Black, whose retirement will usher in a new era for the department, as we welcome Assistant Chief Bourne, whose fresh ideas and direction will invigorate the daily operations. With Battalion Chief Steiner joining the department, the department plans to revamp the EMS program in 2024 and 25, introducing more immersive and hands-on training. In December, the department will take delivery of a replacement E1 aerial superseding the 2005 E1 aerial currently in service. This state-of-the-art apparatus, equipped with the latest safety features recommended by industry standards, will ensure the safety of our members during elevated operations. Their Training Division is dedicated to expanding hazardous material training to better serve businesses and residents, and continue officer development training to cultivate better leaders within the department through training and experience. Additionally, live-fire training will be a constant throughout the year, instilling of fundamental skills in new members. Lastly, the Fire Inspection Division, which includes fire marshal and certified fire investigators, will continue their operations. With the support of a part-time inspector, they will maintain fire inspections throughout the city to minimize fire loss. On behalf of the City Council and myself, I express my deepest gratitude to Chief Ren and all the dedicated individuals who make up the Florence Fire and EMS Department. Your dedication and commitment to excellence and courage are truly appreciated. Your selfless acts of bravery do not go unnoticed, and you are always ready to respond at a moment's notice, no matter what the hour or the circumstance. The training and preparation you undergo to serve our community, and the quality of care and assistance you provide, your daily actions save lives, protect property, and make Florence a safer place to live. On behalf of the entire city, I extend my thanks to each one of you. Finally, yet importantly, the Florence Public Services Department, led by Public Services Director Eric Hall, is the heartbeat of Florence with a dedicated team committed to ensuring the well-being and functionality of our city. With 67 skilled professionals and a budget of $6,879,000, the department works tirelessly to create a seamless experience for residents, businesses, and visitors alike. The department's nine critical divisions have worked tirelessly to improve and maintain the quality of life in Florence. The Transportation Division has made significant strides, replacing approximately two miles of street. The Water Division has been diligent in maintaining our water infrastructure, repairing 40-minute main breaks and 97 service leaks. The Sewer Division has been equally active, repairing 32 stoppages and televising over 133,470 linear feet of main. Our Grounds Division has put in over 3,500 hours of mowing and installed 365 tons of mulch throughout the city, enhancing the beauty of our public spaces. The Building Division has been busy with 313 repairs across our 26 facilities, ensuring that our buildings are safe and functional. Our Fleet Division has completed 1,480 vehicle and equipment work orders, keeping our city vehicles and equipment in top condition. The Code Enforcement Board has, or Code Enforcement officers have worked diligently on over 4,000 cases of noncompliance throughout the city, ensuring adherence to our city codes and regulation. And lastly, our Infrastructure Support Services has managed, inspected, and ensured compliance for 64 capital improvement projects, contributing to the city's growth and development. These accomplishments reflect our commitment to serving our residents and improving our city. This past year, the department welcomed several new team members, including Jeremiah Rice, Dylan Drawz, Randy Corpus, Jaden Hunt, and Austin Jackson. Additionally, the Public Services Department updated the water regulations and the pavement standards in the Boone County Subdivision Regulations, ensuring that our infrastructure meets the highest standards. Their team also oversaw the design, construction, management, and implementation of the new Florence Yalls Clubhouse renovations improvements to the council chambers, and were instrumental in implementing the creation of the Veterans Commission. Their efforts extended to improving our city parks, redesigning and replacing the pavers at South Fort Park, and introduced a new hotbox piece of equipment that allows their team to make asphalt repairs during the winter months, ensuring our roads are safe and well-maintained all year round. In the Rosetta Water Building, the department designed and installed an interactive hands-on display that will allow the department to better educate and train our utility operators in a controlled environment. Lastly, the department upgraded our water testing equipment to ensure delivery of safe and clean water to our residents. All of these accomplishments reflect the department's ongoing commitment to enhancing the quality of life for our residents and visitors. In the upcoming year, the Public Services the Public Services Department is gearing up for a transformative year ahead with the projects designed to improve the lives of our residents. One of the standout initiatives is the inaugural Public Works Academy, slated to commence on June 10th and run through July 26. This innovative program will select candidates through a rigorous interview process, providing them with comprehensive training across all facets of the Public Services Department while equipping them with valuable certifications. The initiative aims to build a skilled workforce and promote a deeper sense of community engagement and investment. The Public Services Department remains dedicated in its commitment to the city's recreational spaces with ongoing master planning efforts for the six active parks within the city. By establishing a forward-looking vision, these endeavors seek to ensure these vital community hubs continue to meet the evolving needs and preferences of our residents and visitors for years to come. Additionally, commencement of the master planning for the Florence Aquatic Center in this proposed year's budget underscores the department's dedication to public participation and feedback, ensuring that the facility reflects the desires and priorities of the community it serves. Furthermore, prior city councils and the current city council's decision to maintain the pool, open the pool, extend the season, and enhance the facility with the master plan demonstrates their commitment to these improvements and quality of our life for our residents. Alongside these endeavors, the completion of numerous infrastructure projects, including the construction of a new fire station, road improvements, and installation of adaptive traffic signals will further bolster city's resilience and efficiency. With over 50 capital and in-house improvement projects slated for completion, the Public Services Department remains at the forefront of driving positive change and progress within the city of Florence. Our Public Services Department, the quiet protectors of our city, often work behind the scenes. Their achievements and endeavors largely unseen, yet their ceaseless dedication is what keeps the city's heart beating, enabling businesses to open their doors and residents to go about their daily lives. They form the sturdy backbone that holds our 24/7 city services, ensuring swift responses to the needs of our community. In the depths of winter, their commitment shines with an intensity that rivals the brightest star, ensuring our city remains accessible. They keep our streets clear and safe and ensuring that no matter what, our city's rhythm remains unbroken. Their dedication ensures that Florence never misses a beat, even in the harshest of winters. My special appreciation to Eric Hall and his dedicated crew of the year-round efforts of maintaining the beauty and functionality of our city. On behalf of City Council and myself, I want to extend my deepest appreciation to your group of individuals who work tirelessly behind the scenes to make Florence the wonderful place that it is. Eric, it is your leadership and dedication that are commendable, and your team's year-round efforts at maintaining our beauty and functionality. They do not go unnoticed. To the entire Public Services Department, your efforts make Florence not just a place to live, but a wonderful community to be a part of. Thank you for your commitment to Florence. In our ongoing commitment to transparency and open communication, we've established multiple channels for our citizens to voice their questions and concerns. These include our official website, dedicated email addresses, a direct phone line, and a user-friendly Florence Yall mobile app. Last year, the Florence City Council convened 33 times, demonstrating our commitment to active governance. However, these meetings are not only the platform for citizens to express their concern. We meet twice as often as other legislative bodies to ensure that legislation and projects are passed efficiently. While the council may be visible primarily on Tuesday, I assure you that our team is working diligently behind the scenes and available around the clock. Each city department handles inquiries promptly and addresses all concerns. Our building is open, and we have department heads and officials readily available to engage with residents. We are here for you, and we value your input as we work together to make Florence a better place to live. Our city is not just about the work. It is about recreation also. Our parks, trails, and recreation facilities are not just amenities, but invitations for families, friends, and visitors to connect, unwind, and recharge. We are committed to continually investing in these spaces, encouraging the environment where community events bring families and community together. Additionally, we have exciting art initiatives in the planning stations, stages, that will further enrich our community's cultural landscape and highlight our city's history and artistic talent. Our iconic water tower stands as a symbol of our city, enhancing our sense of place and complementing attractions like Turfway Park, World of Golf, Florence Nature Park, Florence Yalls, and various shopping destinations. Our tourism sector is further bolstered by our hotel and dining options. For newcomers and residents alike, our community guide provides a comprehensive information about city services, ensuring everyone feels at home in our city. As we close the State of City and Budget Address, I want to acknowledge the energy and growth that defines Florence. Yes, we are a lively city with busy roads, traffic signals, storefronts, restaurants, and businesses. But this is not a sign of overgrowth. Rather, it is a testament to our success and the dynamic spirit of our community. While my journey as mayor with Florence began recently, I am a lifelong resident here in Florence, and I have served the city for over 25 years. I am deeply aware of our rich history and legacy left by my predecessors, and I am inspired by my love and dedication that I have for this city. Florence is more than just a place to reside. It is home. Families raise their children here, and memories are made, and we cherish our safe neighborhoods and our green spaces. We take pride in our local parks and amenities, and our commitment to public safety ensures that every resident feels secure. Our city excels because of its resilient workforce. Our businesses, both large and small, fuel our economy, providing jobs and opportunities. As we look to the future, let us remember that our strength lies in our community. Our progress is driven by our shared commitment to safety, fiscal responsibility, and the relentless pursuit of excellence. With the continued support and commitment of our city-elected officials, Mel Carroll, Leslie Chambers, Jenna Kemper, David Osborne, Patricia Wingo, and Gary Wen, our department heads and staff members, I am excited about the future of the city of Florence. I am confident that we will continue to be successful because we have amazing people who genuinely care about this community. On behalf of the city and the city council, I want to extend my deepest gratitude to those who serve, those who retired through the year, and those who have stepped up to fill positions. The success of Florence is a collective effort. I offer my sincere thanks to each and every one of you who come to work every day to keep our city on track. Your dedication and commitment are the driving forces to our city's success. I want to thank the residents for being engaged and for taking part in this community and creating to the fabric of this wonderful community to which we live. The state of the city of Florence, Kentucky is strong. Thank you. First reading of ordinance O-12, 2024. It's an ordinance of the city of Florence, Kentucky, adopting the official budget for the 2024-2025 fiscal year of the city. This ordinance adopts the fiscal year 2024-2025 budget of the city, including the General Fund, the Municipal Aid Road Fund, the Infrastructure Fund, the Asset Forfeiture Fund, the Aquatic Center Fund, the Water and Sewer Fund, the World of Golf Fund, and the Health and Dental Fund. Budgeted resources and expenditures are shown on Exhibit A as follows. In the General Fund, estimated revenue and transfers are $50,495,000. Beginning fund balance was $59,269,534, and the total available for appropriation with total expenditures of $51,318,031 for an estimated fund balance of $58,446,503 at year-end. The Municipal Aid Road Fund, estimated revenues and transfers are $825,000. The beginning fund balance was $1,413,601, and the total for appropriations is $2,238,601. The total expenditures and transfers is $695,180, and the estimated fund balance at year-end is $1,543,421. In the Infrastructure Fund, the estimated revenues and transfers are $6,195,000. The beginning fund balance is $29,165,207, and the total available for appropriations is $35,360,207. Total expenditures and transfers are $7,180,150, and the estimated fund balance at year-end is $28,180,005,7. In the Asset Forfeiture Fund, estimated revenues and transfers are $85,000, with the beginning fund balance of $274,136, for a total amount available for appropriations of $359,136. The total expenditures and transfers are $200,180, which will leave an estimated fund balance at year-end of $158,956. In the Aquatic Center Fund, estimated revenues and transfers are $565,500. The beginning fund balance is $2,99,232, and the total available for appropriations is $2,664,732. Total expenditures and transfers are $1,256,700. The estimated fund balance at year-end is $1,408,032. In the Water and Sewer Fund, estimated revenues and transfers are $9,638,200. The beginning fund balance is $29,458,568, for a total for appropriations of $39,96,768. The total expenditures for water and sewer will be $10,526,958, which leave an estimated fund balance at year-end of $28,569,810. The World of Golf Fund, the estimated revenue and transfers are $2,455,500. Beginning fund balance was $11,991,867, and the total available for appropriation is $14,447,936,7. The total expenditures are $2,651,600. An estimated fund balance at year-end is $11,795,767. And finally, in the Health and Dental Fund, estimated revenues and transfers are $3,530,500, with the beginning fund balance of $14,548,235, leave a total available for appropriations of $18,78,735. Estimated total expenditures and transfers are $4,121,200. Will leave an estimated fund balance at year-end of $13,957,535. Is there a motion to approve? Some of... Ms. Wingo?
Second.
Second. Mr. Osborne, any discussion?
I just have one item. When we had our budget retreat May 1st, I expressed my concern not agreeing with the $1.1 million in the General Fund to the memorial improvement for the Veterans Memorial. I definitely feel like every veteran deserves a really nice memorial, and I do believe that we have an exceptional... I mean, we just had Memorial Day, and it felt so proud to sit up there and be part of such a gorgeous area. So I just wanted to bring it up just that I don't really agree with spending an extra $500,000. I understand it needs to be fixed, and that that would be about $600,000, but it's really a 26-year-old area. So I'm just curious and just wanted to discuss, you know, how we're going to spend another $500,000 to basically take the fountain out and redo everything. So if maybe Eric, if you could just help me understand, because it was very brief at the budget retreat, and it's just one of those kind of sticky points with me. I just want to understand a little better.
Sure. So there's more than just the fountain. The fountain is obviously the component between this building and the Veterans Memorial. So, but it does need to replace. We actually had to shut it down again. We tried it. We kept it up and going and kind of labored through it for Memorial Day. The pump has now gone out, so the whole pump needs to be replaced. Anyway, so we have shut that down in the hopes that we're going to move forward with this project. That's just one piece. All of your pavers that surround the memorial are failing and causing trip hazards there. All the lighting, all of the electrical is failing. So those are particular components of it. The main monument itself has a lean to it, so that needs to be removed and replaced. That's another component. Among, you know, a lot of other little additional smaller things that need to be taken care of. So you are correct. There is, if you don't move forward with the project itself, we still have roughly a $600,000 project that still needs to take place out there. So if we're going to disrupt and do all the things that we're going to do to this particular area, it just made sense. Plus, you know, bigger picture, and I hate to say this, but it's really at its capacity. So if there was another war, we're going to have a hard place finding a location for that monument and any other additional recognition that we want to move forward with in the future. You just don't have the room to do it. So I think you got to take all of that into account and not just the component of, yes, we're going to spend an additional 500 to make it nice and fix the things that we need to fix, but you're also opening an opportunity now for future monuments. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
I think my concern was, what are we going to do differently this time as compared to the last time we built to make sure that this new project lasts longer than 20 years?
So there's several things. From the fountain perspective, obviously, we're removing the fountain. We're going to cut those back to extremely small features on each end. As a fountain, it'd be easier to maintain. Plus, I mean, 26 years later, I think we all know codes and regulations, they change. Things have improved in terms of... Even our street specifications are different today. So while I can't tell you that we're going to get 50 years, I don't, I can't tell you that, Leslie, that, Leslie, but what I can say is we will install this to the new standards with maintenance in mind, and as far as the pavers are concerned, we're going to put them on pavement. So right now, they're just on sand. So there's other things. We've learned a lot, so I think this opens up an opportunity to do things the best we know how to do them today.
And then you spoke about how you will be, the new design plan includes the ability to bring everyone together and have a space for events.
Yes.
Can you talk about that?
Absolutely. Thanks for mentioning that. That was another component. Currently, we, as you know, we just did Memorial Day out there, and there is a major...it could feel like a separation based on really the only location we currently have to put up a stage. So with this new design and with the fountain removing, we're going to create two opportunities for being able to hold more events there. So the stage can be placed in front of the memorial with that as a backdrop, or it can be placed more systematically behind it as well. And with some of the spacing that we're doing, it'll create more, a better view shed for the public, depending on where we want to put it. So thanks for bringing that up. I think that's a good opportunity as well, as far as a pro, to making this change.
I understand definitely the fountain, it's big. Is there a way to have some sort of water feature of some kind to kind of bring that area to life without it being a super expensive?
That's what we're doing.
You are? Okay. I thought you mentioned something like that. Okay. Okay, great.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Is the water park master plan in this that we're voting on tonight?
Yes, it was presented to you at the Budget Works Out.
I guess my concern with that was that, help me understand, but if we start redoing things in the Aquatic Center, then we have to make it up to the same regulation standards as 2024 already has. So that could cost a lot more money than just leaving it alone. And then also, when, weren't there already like three design ideas presented whenever the survey results came in about what we could do with it?
There wasn't any designs for improving the Aquatic Center features in the pool itself.
Any other discussion?
I can kind of give you an overview of what we're doing here tonight. We started the budget process on May the 1st, some 40-some days ago.
The staff started it in March.
What did I say?
March, staff started in March, yeah.
So it's been, it's been ongoing, and we have had every opportunity since then, both formally and informally, to have our points made and our questions asked and answered. Here we are at the first reading of the budget, and it's a little bit late to be talking about any changes or anything like that. So if you have concerns about what's in the budget, we need to work on those during the planning process for the budget and not the first reading of the budget, which we're doing tonight. So just be sensitive to that, if you could.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Are we going to be presented with some of these things separately? Is that not like?
Ms. Chambers, you were presented with this over six weeks ago at the budget retreat, and I have not heard anything from you, any concerns about the budget.
Are we able to pull certain items out and then vote on them separately?
No, ma'am. We need a vote, Ms. Chambers. We can come back to you if you want.
No, just vote no. Mr. Winn?
Yes.
Ms. Kemper?
Yes.
Ms. Wingo?
Yes.
Mr. Osborne?
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor, motion passes 5-1.
Next item is first reading of ordinance O-12, 2024. I'm sorry, O-13. And it, no, wait a minute. It is O-12. Oh, I'm sorry. This is an ordinance relating to personnel, amending ordinance O-4, 2024, and O-9, 2024, relating to the personnel policies, job descriptions, authorized position, and the pay plan. This purpose of this ordinance is O-13, 2024, relating to personnel policies, job descriptions, and authorized positions. And the pay plan is to add, A, add three positions for police officer, B, add the position of AMI coordinator, C, add six positions for firefighter/EMT, or firefighter/paramedic, or paramedic, D, add three positions of fire lieutenant, E, add three positions for fire captain, F, eliminate one position for director of hospitality, G, change the position of administrative secretary, I want to administrative assistant, H, change the position of GIS technician to GIS administrator, I, change the project administrator to public infrastructure analyst, and J, create the position and job description of, for police property clerk. In all other respects, the current ordinance relating to personnel policies, job descriptions, authorized positions, and the pay plan shall remain the same. The full text of ordinance O-13, 2024, including its exhibits, is available for the examination in the office of the City Clerk of the City of Florence, Kentucky, during regular office hours at 8100 Ewing Boulevard, Florence, Kentucky. Is there a motion to approve? Yes.
Sound move.
That was Ms. Kemper, and second by Mr. Carroll. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. Winn?
Yes.
Ms. Kemper?
Yes.
Ms. Wingo?
Yes.
Mr. Osborne?
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor, motion passes 6-0.
Next item is municipal order M-05, 2024, municipal order approving the reappointment of Rick Roland to the City of Florence Code Enforcement Board for a three-year term. Is there a motion to approve? Mr. Winn?
Second.
Second, Ms. Wingo. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. Winn?
Yes.
Ms. Kemper?
Yes.
Ms. Wingo?
Yes.
Mr. Osborne?
Yes.
Mayor, motion passes 6-0.
Next is a municipal order M-06, 2024, approving the appointment of Tom Gangnan as the city's representative and Justin Finke as the city's alternate representative of the Intermodal Coordinating Committee of the Ohio-Kentucky-Indiana Regional Council of Governments. Is there a motion to approve?
Sound move.
Mr. Carroll, second by Ms. Wingo. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. Winn?
Yes.
Ms. Kemper?
Yes.
Ms. Wingo?
Yes.
Mr. Osborne?
Yes.
Mayor, motion passes 6-0.
Next is municipal order M-07, 2024, municipal order approving the reappointment of Lila Huff to the Florence Board of Adjustment and Zoning Appeals for a four-year term. Is there a motion to approve? Mr. Winn?
Second.
Ms. Wingo?
Any discussion? I have a quick question. Is this a paid position? I'm sorry for my ignorance, but I just wasn't sure if, is it volunteer?
It's, I think they get $30 per meeting?
$35.
$35 per meeting.
Okay.
And they usually meet eight to 10 times a year, maybe?
Four to five times.
Four to five times a year.
When I, last, at the last meeting, I asked about an attendance record, and I didn't see that in.
Both Mr. Roland, or Mr. Roland and Ms. Huff really only have, on average, in the last three years of their term, one absence per year. So attendance is not a factor.
Any other discussion?
I'd like to say that I appreciate Mr. Roland, Ms. Huff, and Mr. Gagon, and Mr. Finke for assuming these positions. They are positions that are sorely needed in the city, helps our city run, and they step forward to do it, and it beholds them to do that, and I appreciate it.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. Winn?
Yes.
Ms. Kemper?
No.
Ms. Wingo?
Yes.
Mr. Osborne?
Yes.
Mayor, motion passes 5-1.
Municipal order M-08, 2024, municipal order approving and authorizing Dr. Julie Metzger Abashon as mayor to execute for, and on behalf of the city of Florence, Kentucky, a memorandum of agreement with the Boone County Veterans Memorial, Inc. Is there a motion to approve? Sound move. Ms. Wingo?
Second.
Second, Mr. Winn. Mr. Hall, would you like to touch on this?
Sure. I can hit on this real quick. I think maybe most of you know this, but if not, we have, for the last, for over 20 years now, have worked with a nonprofit organization, Boone County Veterans Memorial, led by H.B. Actually, all the monuments that are out there have been, funds have been raised through that nonprofit, and that is, they picked up all the costs for the monuments, and we have just maintained them. So what this agreement is, is just clarifying the responsibilities between us and the Boone County Veterans Memorial. So it just spells, it spells those particular items out, that they will continue to make recommendations to the Florence New Veterans Commission. That commission will review that recommendation, and then they will, in turn, make a recommendation to administration to decide whether or not they want to move forward with that monument. If the answer is yes, then that Boone County Veterans Memorial will raise the funds for the monument to be built, and then it will be installed, and we'll continue to maintain it and the grounds. So all this is, is putting all that in writing, because, believe it or not, it never has been. So we're just doing some cleanup.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. Winn?
Yes.
Ms. Kemper?
Yes.
Ms. Wingo?
Yes.
Mr. Osborne?
Yes.
Mayor, motion passes 6-0.
So join us this, for the Movies in the Park this Friday at the Florence Nature Park, beginning at 8:00 PM. Movies and popcorn are free. Food and drinks will be available for purchase, and movies will begin at 8:30 PM. This Friday is Barbie. Wonka is June 21st, and Super Mario Brothers is on June 28th. The city will host a mini golf tournament on June 22nd from 4:30 to 7:00 PM at the World of Golf. For more information, contact Gianna at 859-647-5441. The city of Florence will celebrate Independence Day with a Celebrate Independence Day event, and that'll be on the day before Independence Day, July 3rd, from 7:00 to 10:00. There will be food tricks and live music from east of Austin and at 7:00 PM, and with the fireworks display at 10:00 PM. The range date for fireworks will be July 4th. In observance of Independence Day, the city offices will be closed on Thursday, July 4th. And finally, the city will host an Art and Vendor Festival on July 20th at Bell Park Historic Main Street Fire Station, beginning at 9:00 AM. For more information, you can contact the Administration Department at 859-647-8177, and we'll be excited to share with you our photo contest winners at that event. Is there anyone on council who desires recognition?
Can I, I would, can I bring up a question? The lights in the skate park, where are we at with that?
So that will be part of the master plan that we're currently doing. So that, you will see that as a recommendation come forward once we get to that point. This, just keep in mind, you guys just threw the approval of the budget, and once the second reading is completed, we had money in there to complete the final phase of this Parks Master Plan, which ends in September. So recommendations are going to come out then, and that will be one of the recommendations based on what I'm seeing today.
Great, thank you.
The final report has not been developed yet, so there is a moving target a little bit, but we think that's...okay.
Anyone else? Any departments? Anyone from the audience? Approach the podium.
Is there a button?
I think it's on.
Is it on?
Yeah, it's on. I can hear you.
Hi, Angie Cable. Bear with me, I have a little bit of a cold, so I apologize. So I was at the budget meeting. You guys will gracefully let me sit and listen to you guys go over the budget. Couldn't speak, but listened. And so I've had time to look over the budget, and many of the line items are very necessary to run a productive city. Totally understand that. Some of the line items I don't quite understand, but I'm sure I can reach out to Josh and get answers on that. I do want to say that I am very involved in our community, and one thing that I hear the most from the residents is the lack of amenities besides parks, especially for our youth. It brings me to my proposal and request for the administration to add this to the agenda for consideration. My proposal is a rec center. There are vacant areas in our city, so no new construction would be necessary, but rather remodeling to accommodate the need. A rec center would provide educational equity, offering volunteer classes for art, music, continued education, vocational workshops. It's a place where events could be held indoors, because we all know that the weather is unpredictable. It can also include things like a fitness center, indoor pool, basketball court, indoor track, et cetera, for an area that is geographically unavailable and vulnerable, such as the east side of Florence. So why a rec center? Well, first, it would support our youth. About 30% of our population is under the age of 18. If you add in young adults, that number increases to over 40%. That's almost half of our population in the city of Florence. Studies show that rec centers in similar cities allow kids, teens, and young adults to exercise, explore new sports, form relationships with peers and facilitators. It ultimately helps with their social, mental, physical development, as well as developing skills through mentoring. So who would facilitate this? This would be a great opportunity for a new chief malarie to usher in a form of policing, which she's already doing, geared towards building long-lasting bonds with our youth, similar to our sheriffs in our schools. And of course, I'm not suggesting that you would be the only person to facilitate it, but I do know, as a social worker, you know, interning is something that is expected, and I'm sure we could find a lot of individuals in the area that can intern to kind of help facilitate that, as well as high school seniors that need the volunteer hours to graduate. So, I mean, even partnering with our community, I know we have a lot of community partners that work with the city for things like this. I know volunteers that volunteer with me when I do my free yard sales. I have so many people that help out, I don't think that aspect of it would be an issue. I think that it is also very important to promote socialization in an era where most of the kids are constantly on their phones or game systems instead of playing outside like we did when we were kids. Socialization and, yeah, socialization lacking in many of our youth would be provided through a rec center, where they would have a safe space, especially in the colder months, and statistically, it shows crime rates decrease in cities that provide these types of services. A rec center could also be a resource for adults as well, as many residents have expressed their interest in a track and feel unsafe running on the roads because drivers are glued to their phones, not paying attention. Be a great alternative to promoting overall fitness of all ages. So ultimately, considering a rec center for a community, not only benefits our community, it keeps our residents here in the city doing these activities instead of going to our neighboring cities, like Erlanger. So how do we fund this? Well, looking at the budget, we have several grants that are sitting there not being utilized, because I, from my understanding, the city attorney is unsure if those funds can be used for projects like this. I propose that the city attorney reach out to the respective organizations who have provided the city with these grants to get answers, instead of letting these funds roll over year after year. I will finish by saying that the city of Florence is becoming a place where, unfortunately, people are hesitant to raise their families, because it is becoming overcrowded with businesses, and that we have to travel outside of city limits for activities, especially in the winter. Like you said, Florence is pivotal for retail and restaurants. Let it be pivotal in investing in our youth and providing a safe space for them to grow and continue to work and finish the great work that the city has already established. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else desire recognition? If not, entertain a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Mr. Carroll and Mr. Winn? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all for coming.